Meeting for the county, for the people of Hart County. We just pray for our law enforcement, our fire protection, our EMS, all of our emergency services. We just thank you for these guys willing to take the time and volunteer in the fire department and to make our community safe. We just pray, Lord, for the leaders of our country right now. We pray for the governors of each state that they would make wise decisions and return law and order to our land. We pray, Lord, for each one that takes the time to lift your name up in prayer and pray for our law enforcement and all these guys. Lord, we just want our folks to know that we love our law enforcement, we care about them, and we'll do whatever we can to support them. Lord, we just pray for our school board right now. We just pray, Lord, that these guys have got decisions to make and they're involved with our children and their education. Everyone's not going to agree with any decision they make, but we just pray, Lord, that you give them wisdom to make the right decisions for the people in our county here. Will this go with us through this meeting? We appreciate the opportunity to live here in Hart County, Georgia, and we just pray that you'd help us to make the best decisions for the people of Hart County. In that I am praying. Amen.
This time I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, ever-dead, just as for all.
At this time, I'll call to order the Tuesday, July 28, 2020, meeting of the Hart County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to welcome everyone here. First item of business tonight will be to approve the agenda, and we do need to add under invited guest Parks White, our district attorney, and I feel sorry for not adding that on there. We had asked Mr. White to come and speak with us about Stand Your Ground law. Commissioner Sayer had had a great idea and thought that would be good to ask district attorney to come talk to us about that. So we'll put him under invited guest, and we appreciate him being here tonight as well. Any other changes?
No other changes. I make motion we approve the agenda.
Second. I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Commissioner Sayer and a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? Public comment on the agenda? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. You've got the July 14, 2020, regular meeting minutes in your packet. If there are no corrections or changes, could I get a motion that we approve?
So may. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley and a second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? Public comment on the minutes? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. This time would like to move into the remarks by invited guest committees and authorities. And as I said earlier, Commissioner Sayer had an idea that we invite our district attorney to come talk about the Stand Your Ground law. We've received some questions and got a couple of those tonight for our district attorney. At this time, I'd like to recognize Parks White, our district attorney, and see if he tells us a little bit about what you can and can't do from our Stand Your Ground law.
Thank you very much. Would it be okay if I ran a presentation through this?
Sure. It's all yours.
I appreciate the invitation and opportunity to appear before you this evening to talk about, let's see, about the law regarding self-defense and defensive habitation in the state of Georgia. I want to start off talking about what we call in Georgia the Castle Doctrine. And I know the Attorney General of Missouri recently said that Missouri's Castle Doctrine is the strongest in the nation. I would disagree with them. I think the state of Georgia is actually the strongest Castle Doctrine and self-defense laws in the country. Basically, in your own home, you have the right to use deadly force against anyone who makes unlawful entry into your home, and you think they might cause violence to any person in your home. And while what we're seeing in other areas of the country, things like this, this incident occurred. That incident occurred inside a private gated community that had been broken into when those people, persons exited their home to defend their property. Any of those persons who were on their property, not even within their home, but on their property, if they believed that they were going to use force against them or anybody else in the home, they would have been justified not only in brandishing the weapons as they did, but actually using them offensively against the person they believe may cause them harm because of the entry was violent. So defensive habitation actually has different standards than regular self-defense. Defensive habitation says a person is justified in threatening or using force against another when and to the extent that he or she reasonably believes that such threat or force is necessary to prevent or terminate such other's unlawful entry into or attack upon a habitation. Deadly force is authorized when the entry is made or attempted to be made in a violent and tortuous manner. This means that if you have someone at your home and you ask them to leave, they don't leave, you can't use deadly force against them. That there's the difference. This has to be someone who has broken into your home rather than someone who's an invited guest that you've asked to depart. And said person reasonably believes that the entry is for the purpose of assaulting or offering personal violence to any person or being therein, and that such force is necessary to prevent the assault or offer of personal violence, or that force is used against another person who is not a member of the family or household and who unlawfully forcibly enters or has unlawfully forcibly entered the residence, and the person using the force knew or had reason to believe that the unlawful and forcible entry occurred. That means that knowing that someone unlawfully and forcibly entered the home who is not a member of the household gives you reason to use deadly force in defense of your habitation. Person using such force reasonably believes the entry is made or attempted for the purpose of committing a felony therein, and that such force is necessary to prevent the commission of the felony. Habitation means any dwelling, motor vehicle, place or place of business. So this extends just not beyond your just dwelling. It also means your motor vehicle. If people attempt to make unlawful entry into your car, like surrounding you on the street, that is also covered by defensive habitation, and you can use deadly force against them if you reasonably believe that such force is necessary to prevent grave bodily injury to you or a member of the, or inside the habitation or vehicle. Personal property means personal property other than a motor vehicle, and the standard for defensive property other than, I'm sorry, habitation is different standard than defensive So for defensive property, a person is justified in using force against another when and to the extent he or she reasonably believes that such threat or force is necessary to prevent or terminate such other's trespass on or other tortious or criminal interference with real property other than habitation or personal property. If that property is lawfully in his possession, lawfully in the possession of a member or his or immediate family, or belonging to a person whose property he has a legal duty to protect. Use of deadly force to prevent trespass on or other tortious or criminal interference with real property other than habitation or personal property is not justified unless the person using such force reasonably believes that it is necessary to prevent the commission of a forcible felony against that person or the person of another. So then there's defensive self, and let's talk about what Stand Your Ground is. In Georgia, what Stand Your Ground derives from is that in common law, there was a requirement that when a person confronted you in the public, you had a duty to retreat if it was possible. If there was a means of escape where you could retreat rather than using deadly force against someone who attacks you, then you had to do that rather than use deadly force. But we've come to the point in Georgia and in many states, we recognize that that is not a reasonable requirement for individuals to attempt to escape someone else's attempted use of deadly force. So a person uses threats or force in accordance with Georgia law in defense of self or others has no duty to retreat and has the right to stand his or her ground and use force, including deadly force. Once again, we'll talk a little bit more about what all this means, but primarily, you have to be the actual, you cannot be the aggressor in these cases, and you can't use force against another to incentivize or try to provoke them into using force against you to then justify your use of deadly force. So long as you are not the aggressor, these provisions apply. As Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes said, detached reflection cannot be demanded in the presence of an uplifted knife. So for self-defense, there are actually two standards, and it's a time-sensitive inquiry, meaning that you have to be operating at the time under the reasonable apprehension that that force might be used against you and that such use of force is imminent. You can't come back and in revenge attack someone who might have harmed you days ago saying that you think that they might harm you now. So it has to be while under the apprehension of that force being used against you. And the belief that the force is necessary must be subjectively held, meaning the person must believe it themselves individually, but also must be objectively reasonable. And that means that it must be under those circumstances, an objectively reasonable person would believe that such force is necessary in those circumstances. We had a case recently in Albert County. Defendant's name was Sherman Allen. He, I'm not sure if you've heard about this case, but he followed his wife slash girlfriend, they had been living together for many years. He located them behind the Pyramid Petro in Alberton, and he was with, she was with her, Tristan Smith, the victim in the case, who, that they had been having a relationship. He got out of his car and ran towards Tristan, confronted him, ultimately knocking him to the ground, beating him and kicking him in the head with metal steel-toed boots until he was dead. And he claimed it was, he was acting in self-defense. Fortunately, there was some security camera footage from a nearby granite shed that showed that he ran across the parking lot and attacked him. He testified in the case and said that he approached him and confronted him, and at which point Tristan swung at him, and the video evidence showed that that wouldn't have been possible based upon the timeframe. Also, on his way to the parking lot, he stopped his vehicle, he backed up, he got back out, went back and kicked the victim a few more times in the head with those steel-toed boots. So his belief was not objectively reasonable. Also, it wasn't actually subjectively held. It was a very imperfect, imperfect self-defense claim. A person is justified in using force that is intended or likely to cause death or great bodily harm only if that person reasonably believes that such force is necessary to prevent death or great bodily injury to himself or a third party, or to prevent the commission of a forcible felony. Another important thing about this too is that if you can, there's self-defense and there's defense of others, meaning you have the ability to defend another person against what appears to be another person's imminent use of deadly or unlawful force or to commit a forcible felony against a third party. However, if you see two persons engaged in combat and you intervene, and you intervene on behalf of the aggressor, you become culpable for that attack. So if you don't know who started the altercation, best not to get involved at all, because whoever, the only person who has the right to defend themselves in that situation is the person who is not the aggressor. So if you join in and attack the person who is actually not the aggressor, then you become culpable for, in that attack. So like I said, it's an objective standard, a reasonable person's standard, meaning that's what we have juries for, would a reasonable person, given these circumstances, believe that such force was necessary in defense of that person? Now, so the standard is not whether the circumstances were such that they would excite the fears of a subjective individual, but whether they would excite the fears of a reasonable Person is not justified in using force if that person initially provokes use of force against himself with the intent to use such force as an excuse to inflict bodily harm upon the assailant. And I use quotes there because in that situation, the actual assailant is the person who is subsequently claiming self-defense after initially provoking force. A person is not justified in using force when that person was the aggressor. Person is not justified in using force if that person is attempting to commit, committing or fleeing after the commission or attempted commission of a felony. And this justification standard applies to self-defense in particular. When it comes to defensive habitation, and giving you an example of what this means, if a person's out in the public and he's a felon and he has a firearm, and another person approaches him and he says he thought that the person was going to use force against him, and he pulls out a firearm and he shoots and kills the person, doesn't matter if he reasonably actually thought he was going to be harmed, it doesn't matter if he was, if an objectively reasonable person would think that self-defense was necessary in that situation, because that person is committing a felony by possessing a firearm as a felon. That does not apply to the home. So a person who's convicted of a felony who has a firearm in the home, that doesn't remove that immunity that you have under the Castle Doctrine. So that if someone breaks into your home, even if you're a convicted felon and you have a firearm in the home that's illegal for you to possess and it's a felony for you to possess, you're not stripped of that protection in your home, because that's how powerful the defensive habitation statute is in Georgia. For the force to be justified under the law, the accused must truly acted under the influence of fear, meaning that under the apprehension of receiving a violent injury at the time, and not in a spirit of revenge. If someone, after provocation occurs, comes back and there's been a cooling off period sufficient for the voice of reason to make humanity be heard, it won't even reduce the offense from murder to voluntary manslaughter, because when a person acts in a spirit of revenge, that would be considered malice murder. Excessive force. The use of excessive force or unlawful force is not justified. So if the force used exceeds that which was reasonably necessary to defend against the victim's use of unlawful force, then the force is not justified. But bear in mind that when someone raises the defense of self-defense in a criminal context, it becomes the state's burden to prove beyond all reasonable doubt that that person was not justified in using force. So when they raise the defense, now that they have, they don't have to prove anything. We have to disprove their defense beyond a reasonable doubt. A person is justified to use force against another only when he reasonably believes such force is necessary to defend himself against unlawful force. Now, all of that's great, but what does that mean if you end up having to use unlawful force against somebody? I mean, those are the standards, but still, is there the potential in Georgia that you would be dragged through the court system like what is happening with these people in St. Louis? Not here. In Georgia, our code also guarantees you immunity from prosecution. So a person who uses threats or force in accordance with Georgia law, both self-defense and defensive habitation, shall be immune from criminal prosecution, and that's set forth also in Title 16 and the same section related to defense of habitation and self-defense and those other affirmative defenses. Now, how do we, how does this right guaranteed? Well, if someone is charged or by indictment with committing an offense for which they want to raise a claim of self-defense, the defense can file what is called a motion for immunity, and we conduct an immunity hearing where they have the burden in that scenario to prove by preponderance of the evidence that they were justified in using force. If the court finds that they were, by that preponderance standard, that they were justified in using force, the court can then hold that the charges must be dismissed because they're immune from prosecution and insist that the charging document be dismissed. Civil immunity is also set forth in our code, and a person is justified in threatening using force in Georgia law against another under the provisions of Georgia law has no duty to retreat from the use of such force and shall not be held liable to the person against whom the use of force is justified, or to any person acting as an accomplice or assistant to such person in any civil action brought as a result of a threat or use of force. So if someone breaks, and there have been horror stories, I'm sure that people have heard, where what if someone breaks into my home and I have to use a weapon against them and they're maimed? If someone breaks into your home and you have to use a weapon against them, they cannot sue you as the homeowner for using force against them, and they can't bring an action against you. Now, there are situations where someone can sue a homeowner if they break in and they're injured, but that would be a situation, for example, if someone like loaded a spring gun inside a house that was set to go off automatically, if a house is broken into, a shotgun on like a string that shoots someone a leg, that's not authorized, and that would be prohibited by law. And in that scenario, a person would be able to sue the homeowner that set up such a contraption. So the guidance I would say though, please remember that anytime you're using deadly force or you come to the point, and no one wants to use deadly force, please realize that. Police don't want to use deadly force, homeowners don't want to use deadly force. It's not a pleasant thing, no matter how guilty the person is to have to use force against another person. But if someone breaks into your home and you're, and you come to the point where you have to use force to stop their entry and you're using a firearm, firearms are designed to kill, and you should only use them to try to kill the person, not to maim or injure them. Aim for center mass and shoot them to kill them. And the reason for that is if you use a firearm against somebody and you don't kill them, that gun is just as dangerous to you and your family members as it is to that person. If they're able to get it away from you, you could be the one who ends up the victim of that crime. So that's the recommendation, is that don't use, don't threaten or use, don't use deadly force, or don't, I'm sorry, do not use something designed for deadly force against a person without the intention to kill. It should only be used with the intention to kill. Are there any questions?
Had somebody asked me and wanted to talk to me today about it. We talk about the Stand Your Ground primarily, and you mentioned it, in your habitat, your personal vehicle, whatever, but if you are in a public place.
That's what Stand Your Ground is. Stand Your Ground doesn't have anything to do with habitat. It's in a public place, you don't have a duty to retreat. So you're in the public and someone confronts you, like I said, in common law, the requirement was that if there was an available method of escaping without any person having to come to harm, you had to run away essentially from someone attempting to attack you. But our law for Stand Your Ground in Georgia is that if someone approaches you and attempts to use unlawful force against you, you don't have to try to retreat before you're authorized to use deadly force to prevent their unlawful attack against you.
Am I having other questions?
If one law is considered habitation.
Habitation includes your home, your dwelling, so that dwelling is specifically defined in our code, because we have degrees of burglary now in Georgia, where first degree burglary is your dwelling, is your household, the place where you live, and then you, other buildings are second degree burglary. But your business is also considered habitation for the purposes of defensive habitation statute, as is your motor vehicle. So the same thing, someone surrounds your car, you're out in the public, or a group of people surround your car, and you believe that they intend to use deadly force against you, you can use force to prevent them from using that force against you.
What about your other tent camp that I was looking at?
In that situation, that would be your dwelling. So you'd be able to use force to defend your dwelling.
Does that understand? If you tell a situation where you must defend yourself, hate the force, did you, if the guy's knocked down, shoot the force?
I wouldn't say execute anybody, like, you know, if you, once you stop the threat.
But if he's gotten down, he's crashing around looking for.
Then he's still a threat. If he's, if he's still, you know, moving and he poses a risk of being able to get to you and take your weapon, then he's still a threat. So you would shoot.
You must neutralize.
Shoot until he stops, yes.
Mr. White, someone takes me about the, we've seen this on the news, and where people are standing out into the road as a protest, or what are your rights as a, or driver of a vehicle that's going down that road? Do you have, and they're not in a pedestrian crosswalk?
I would say try to avoid those situations to the best of your ability. If, don't drive into a crowd, if some, because it's extremely dangerous, and at that point, you could, you're driving a vehicle that could be considered a weapon, so if you drive into a crowd, you could be considered the aggressor in that situation. But if you're on the road and there are people who are moving onto the road, call 911, get the police there, because if they're blocking traffic and they don't have a permit to parade, then they are committing a crime and they should be arrested and removed from the road. If they approach your vehicle and attempt to surround it, then they are a threat, and if you believe that they pose a risk of causing you or any person in the vehicle serious bodily injury, you can use deadly force to prevent them from attacking you. You don't have to back up and retreat or try to, try to drive away if they're approaching, approaching you.
We live close to South Carolina here. Are a lot of these laws the same in South Carolina, or can you speak to that?
I went, you know, I went to Clemson, but I don't know much about the South Carolina laws.
I got a text that just come in from a viewer who says, does your dwelling have to be owned or can it be rented? Does it matter?
Does it not matter. Anyplace you live is your dwelling. Wherever you lay your head at night and go to sleep is your dwelling.
Anybody else have any questions?
If you're in a situation in your automobile where you cannot retreat with him there, and then you give him the wrong laws, you're basically going to have to win. But if I have any?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any other questions? We really appreciate you taking your time out to come do this.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, very good presentation, very informative. We'll move on to the item eight, reports by constitutional officers and department heads. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't have any substantive report, but I did want to observe that the Chief Justice of the Georgia Supreme Court, Harold Melton, has extended the judicial emergency through August the 11th. What that means is that the courts are still open for handling criminal matters and for handling matters of an emergency nature, like a temporary protective order or something of that nature. But as far as your routine or regular civil case, the courts are basically in a state of limbo until August 11th. That was done, I think, and actually extended the day before your last meeting. I should have reported on it then. That's where we are with courts, and I think that, I know y'all, most of y'all know that, but I thought it might be helpful for the folks at home to understand that while a lot of lawyers do delay things, they're not pulling your leg this time. They really can't get into court right now.
County Ministers' Report.
Just a couple of things, kind of for clarification for the public. Is with the COVID stuff going on, it's been going a long time. Sometimes it's confusion when people call 911 because our operators have to ask them specific questions. And even with the EMS gets to their house, that we have to handle that totally different by statute from the state. It's not that our medics are lazy and don't want to tow you from the house. This is protocol. They go to the front door, one medic goes to the front door. If the patient is able to walk, they walk to the porch. The other medics stand at the truck, we're not, you gotta dress out. So this is not our medics being lazy or sorry, this is the protocol they have to follow. If they can't walk, of course, they're gonna come in and get them, but the patient is able to walk, especially with a fever, they're asked to walk outside. That's, that's the state protocol, just so people don't understand what's going on. If you got any questions, my phone's, call me anytime, and I'll answer any questions for you. But just a heads up to everybody, we have to handle things different now than we ever have, and it does, it's different than we've ever done with people that we deal with all the time, and sometimes it's misunderstood why we do what we do, but that's what's going on with that kind of stuff. I don't get that.
What's the purpose of it? Just to minimize exposure?
Minimize exposure, correct. Again, if you'll stop and think about the PPE, if we, we'll run 500 calls this month. That's a thousand sets of PPE we'd burn in a month. If we go there and they vaguete, tell them where they got fresh air, they'll make a determination in, they may not need to do all that stuff. And so that, plus, the truck's got to be decon after every call and all this kind of stuff. It's just different, and we're trying to make the best out of the situation we got. But that's all I have.
All right. Chairman's Report. Several things. First of all, we do have a budget meeting afterwards. We'll be meeting with the animal shelter, recreation department, and library, and anything else that may come up. That'll be after this meeting. There's a ladies fishing tournament this weekend. I talked to Terrell, but we want to reach out to Randy Seabright upon his retirement and recognize him for his years of service. We'll be doing that.
Yeah, we'll be doing that probably first meeting next month, if he's available to be here.
That fishing tournament is planned on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday?
Friday, Saturday.
And I also want to congratulate Captain Wayne Henson with the Sheriff's Department for being voted in the Hartwell Sons Best of for Best Law Enforcement Officer. Ronnie Thompson, who's one of our paramedics, for being voted Best EMT, and Mike Cleveland for Best Elected Official. And I won't change gears, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here, but I do want to, I have, I have an issue, and it involves executive session material that this board is allowed to go into executive session to discuss. And there's a leak. There's things that's being discussed in executive session that I was asked about specifically last night, and I just want to publicly state, and I'm going to ask our attorney to look into this, if we get wind of this again, and I'm speaking to the commissioners, myself included, that if there's a breach of the confidentiality, I'm going to challenge your availability of being. I'm going to challenge your availability of being in that executive session. The law allows us to go into executive session to keep things confidential, but there's multiple things that have gotten out that we've discussed, and it puts us in a very difficult position because somebody asked me something specifically that was discussed in our last meeting in executive session, and I told them I couldn't answer the question. Definitely caught off guard, but I want to remind each of us that we have an oath of office to maintain that confidentiality, and Mr. Gordon, I'd like for you to look at the legality of that, if you could, because this is something that's, in my opinion, it's very serious, and that's all I'm going to say, I'm not going to call any names or say anything else, I'm just going to leave it at that. Commissioners' Report, District Two.
I appreciate our law enforcement, first responders, our EMS, fire department, and our county employees, and we'll try to get in that fishing tournament Friday and Saturday. That's all I got.
District Three.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I, congratulations to those county employees that were elected the best of Hart County. Also, would like to say, you know, we get up in the morning, we go to work, we go home, we go to the park with our children, there's a reason we can do that. There's law enforcement out there that helps protect us and helps, and I really think that, like I said before, we need to pray for these guys every night, and not only these guys, but think about these healthcare workers, I know we don't have a hospital here in Hart County, but the ones at Livonia, Athens, and, and I'll say, the nursing homes, you know, they're, you've seen in the paper where they had COVID positive test results, and, and you know, and you think about these, some of these staff members, you know, they have to go home, and now some other staff member has to pick up the slack, or we have to call in what they call contract help providers or whatever, so these people are working very hard, and I, I think they need our prayers also, and just wanted to remind people of that fact, but that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
District Four.
Yeah, I'd like to also say congratulations to the people that won the award, good job, appreciate it. That's all I got.
Moving into old business, first item, this is something to carry over from our last meeting, we did not take any action because there were some questions about looking at this from a bid mix standpoint, and Terrell, you've had some discussions with some folks, and.
I did. Basically, what we done, I went back and examined the documents, and it appears that the document was set out for football uniforms total, not take one from this and one from that and one from the other. So our recommendation is, is the same as the Recreation Advisor's vote for the last time, I run it through by Walter and through Walter, and he agreed with us, is to recommend that be awarded to Royal Graphics.
I make a motion that we go with the Rec Advisor's recommendation to award the bid to Royal Graphics.
Motion by Commissioner Sayer, and a second by Commissioner Carter, any more discussions? Public comment on this item? Not all in favor, raise your right hand, motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing the election to decide liquor by the drink. I don't think Sunday sales of liquor is going to be part of that, based on conversation I had with county attorney earlier today.
That's right, Sunday sales will not be a part of this vote, the, there's a question in my mind, is whether or not both, both questions can be on the ballot at the same time, and my suggestion, not being able to determine that it is, that it is correct, I'm going to take the more conservative view and state that we should have a vote on liquor by the drink first, and then if that's passed, then we could come back with a secondary referendum on liquor by the drink on Sunday. We've already passed, the people have already passed and approved the Sunday sales of beer and wine. But basically, what this resolution does is that, and I'm not going to read the entire thing, because I really don't want you to go to sleep, I'll give you a copy if you have insomnia, it might, might put you there. Basically, what it says is that licenses for the sale of distilled spirits by the drink for consumption only on the premises where sold cannot be in a jurisdiction where packaged sales of distilled spirits are not legal until the governing authority elects, conducts through the election superintendent a referendum election for the purpose of determining whether or not such, such powers should be exercised. Further states that the Board of Commissioners desires to give the citizens of Hart County the opportunity to vote on the question of whether or not licenses to sell distilled spirits for beverage purposes by the drink, such sales to be for consumption only on the premises should be issued in Hart County. And therefore, there is authorized to be called, and there is hereby called a special election to be held in all the precincts in Hart County, Georgia on November 3rd, 2020, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of Hart County the question of whether or not the governing authority of Hart County shall be authorized to issue licenses to sell distilled spirits for beverages by the drink, such sales to be for consumption only on the premises. It then goes ahead to state the question that would be on the ballot, it's pretty simple, it says, shall the governing authority of Hart County be authorized to issue licenses to sell distilled spirits for beverage purposes by the drink, such sales to be for consumption on the premises only, and there will be blocks to check yes or no. It goes on, further authorize the Board of Elections and Registration and the Election Superintendent to make arrangements to issue the call of the election, and then to publish in the Hartwell Sun the requested length of time, the referendum, which will notify the public of the referendum vote and of the question they're on. The last day to register to vote in this election is October 5th, that is also the last day for registration to vote in the November general election, it's the same thing. So anybody that hasn't registered to vote, I would certainly encourage them to do so. This is going to be a very important election in November, and it won't just be because this, there are a lot of very important races that will be, that are to be decided. That is the resolution, and my recommendation is that if it so suits you, that you would pass it.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion, we go with this resolution.
A motion by Commissioner Sayer, and a second by Commissioner Carter, that we move forward with this resolution authorizing the election liquor by the drink, as we've discussed, any more discussion? Just want to say this basically levels a playing field if it were to pass for restaurants in the county to provide the same level of services as those in the city house, so. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all, yes, ma'am, if you'll come to the podium? If you'll come to the podium, please. If you would, state your name, just for, so everybody can watch it at home.
I'm Shannon Van Skye, I just had a question about the question that's going to be on the actual ballot, I'm just wondering if there's any reason to clarify that it's not a Sunday referendum, because people may not want it on Sunday, so they'll vote no overall. That's my question.
I think you pretty well addressed that, as far as, you know, you gotta, you gotta have the liquor by the drink first before you can go and do the Sunday sales, so.
Okay, so it's not.
It's not going to be, it's not going to be two different things.
You're not going to vote on Sunday sales, that might come at a later election, if this resolution were passed.
I think her concern would, if you not, if you don't specify that Sunday sales are not in there, they might vote no, I believe that's what your concern would.
You know, that may or may not be a valid concern, but I can tell you that we are limited by the state of Georgia law in the wording of the question, it has to be as I worded it here.
So basically what you're saying is that we vote yes or no, yes for it in this past, later on down the road, we'll have, put it back on the ballot again for the Sunday sale.
You can, yes.
Similar to how beer and wine, Sunday sales was done, we already had beer and wine sales from years ago, and then we added that to the, we put that before the voters two years ago, and it was approved for Sunday sales of that, so that's where we're staying right now. Anybody else for public comment on this issue? Now, I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, and a second by Commissioner Carter, that we move forward with, all in favor, raise your right hand, motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a fiscal year 2021 Legacy Link Matching Funds Commitment Letter. We got a commitment letter here from Legacy Link, this is standard for them every year. Our commitment for the match is $11,450, they get a motion to allow me to sign it on behalf of the Hart County Board of Commissioners.
So may second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Carter, we'll get a lot more back from Legacy Link than what we pay into it, a lot of meals and things like that as well, so. Any more discussion, public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand, motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 12D, City of Hartwell Annexation Proposal. This goes back to Hart State Park, and the Board of Commissioners in good faith has offered the city a proposal. The concern the Board of Commissioners have, first of all, I want to say, there is, there was never any discussion whatsoever about annexation of this piece of property into the city limits until just recently. The Board of Commissioners did write a letter in support in 2018, and at that time, there had not been any discussion about annexation, and it's my understanding that a 3-3 vote with the city, which the mayor broke the ties when annexation was added to this, still looking into that, but that's just what I, what I understand. But the issue that the Board of Commissioners has is Georgia law on annexation allows for the 60-40 rule, where 60% of the property owners and 60% of the electors can petition the city council to annex, just say 10 parcels, if six, six wanted it and four didn't, it didn't matter what the other four said, if 60% wanted it, and it met the criteria, and they petitioned the city, the other 40% are going to be annexed, and they had no say whatsoever. It's forced annexation, and this started out in the Ridge Road area with Hillendale subdivision, property all around Hart State Park, because keep in mind, we had not even seen the city's plans on what, how they were even going to try to annex this up until just a couple of months ago. The issue from the constituents, our constituents, county residents, who made it very clear they don't want to be part of the city, they don't want to pay the higher taxes, we've had deannexation requests, and we just approved one, but people made clear they don't live in the city because they don't, if they wanted to be in the city, they would have bought or built in the city, they don't want the city coming out to them. We've got complaints from Ridge Woods, further down Ridge Road, we've got them from North Forest Avenue, we've got them from Elberton Highway out toward Katici, because Katici's in the city, and there's an area in there that's not, that could potentially be, we've got them on 29 South and down to Purina, because Purina's not in the city, and a lot of people think that Purina is, is, is an area the city may go, I don't know. But bottom line is, the Board of Commissioners is representing its constituents, and people don't want to be in the city, and that's why we're taking the position that we're not going to give in to this 60-40 rule, and the board has made it clear, and the city's come back with a proposal, I think everybody here has read it, they've kind of changed some things around, they've got an estoppel clause in here, we, we all know that there's numerous issues with properties that have been annexed into the city, we have not been notified, the laws haven't been followed, as we just recently dealt with the Hersberger property on Ridge Road, a five acre tract, just a couple of meetings ago. There's other properties that we don't have a record of being notified, and just, just basically, this agreement says we throw all that away, and we, you know, that doesn't mean anything. But the city's saying that they won't do the 60-40, but they'll do the seven, they'll do a 70-30. Still an opportunity for forced annexation, so I don't know if anybody else on the board wants to address this or say anything about it, but we need to give them an answer. If you read the law, I think it's 36-36-20, the annexation says that it has to be 50, a minimum of 50 feet or an eighth of the aggregate border must touch existing city property, and what we were being told, the path that the city was wanting to do that, there's no way that they can make that happen, so in our opinion, there's no way that the city can even legally annex Hart State Park into the city. So if anybody wants to say anything else or add to it before we make a.
Another issue I have, Mr. Chairman, is the, you know, we're talking about core property here, and we're talking about a continuous line that goes all the way around the lake, how's that going to affect the county and the city? And we had no answers for that, and, and to vote on that and, and put that into city limits, that's just hard for me to understand, and I would want to know the effects of that first.
You know, when we started this, the Board of Commissioners offered the city a 25-year intergovernmental agreement, saying that we wouldn't object to the annexation of Hart State Park, as long as they would not use the 60-40 annexation, forced annexation for 25 years. We had an agreement worked out, and then when the city council got together, or before they got together, the Monday afternoon, the mayor called me and said, this thing's falling apart. So I talked to each of the commissioners, and we all agreed that we would just do 15, and then we, we were planning on having a call meeting that following day to ratify that, so this would all be behind us. We had not done a lot of research, we weren't going to get involved in it, but the more we've dug into this, it's our conclusion that there's no way that the city can legally annex it. So the 15 years was presented to the city council, which they didn't even discuss, they tabled it, and, and that's where it's at. So they came back with this proposal several weeks ago, and we need to just tell them what we're going to tell them.
You know, like what you covered about 50 foot, you know, like it also says in that law ordinance, you know, about ways to cross a railroad, a state river, a creek, and like what, like what we just said, in my opinion, it don't meet that criteria to do that.
So I'm going to make a motion that we deny the city's intergovernmental agreement that they've sent to us, I mean, this is, this is not in the best interest of the county residents.
I'll give you a second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, a second by Commissioner Teasley, that we deny this agreement, don't agree to it, any more discussion?
Yeah, I got a little bit, I want to say about six, wait, can y'all hear me out there? You all right? You stated earlier that we wrote a letter and support, we supported this thing from the get-go. Now, this agreement, I got questions on, but the only way we're going to get our questions answered and get this thing over and done with, if it's the board wants to get it over and done with, and go ahead and annex or not, that's what they do, and we're going to have to sit down across the table from these guys, work it out. You know, denying this thing, that's fine, and I don't, I don't doubt we need to deny, because it's like I say, I got some questions I don't quite understand, but are we going to sit down across the table, negotiate with them to get what we want, or we just going to keep sending it back no, and then let them send us something, or we send them something? At some point in time, we got, we got to do something. I'm not against them annexing Hart State Park, I'm just against the annexation of other people's property, I think that's what every one of y'all has said, so. But I don't like this agreement no more than anybody else does, but are we going to sit down across the table with them and we'll hash it out? That's the only way we're going to ever solve it.
I made multiple requests to the mayor before we. I made multiple requests to the mayor before we ever offered anything to them to have a meeting, and they decided, they never let us know anything, or, they never gave us an answer. I know there's, I proposed three different dates, and we never got a response. So...
Maybe we get one.
My position is, and I don't have a problem throwing this out there and putting it in the motion, that we, as a county, as Board of Commissioners, we will not object to any legally annexed property that the city does, as long as the city will approve all de-annexation requests. Councilman Hicks and several others have talked about private property rights, and people should have a right to decide. That opens it up on both ends. As long as this is legally done, I have no problem with it. As long as those people who are annexed in, they have a right, if they don't want to stay, that they can de-annex, and all they got to do is go through the de-annexation process. And that's my thoughts. But I don't know how everybody else feels, but yeah, I think that's, that kind of gives it both ways. It gives, gives, gives the property owner the choice, whether they want to stay in the city or go in the city, or if they want to come out. And I don't think you can be any fairer than that. So I have a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, a second, to deny this request. Any more discussion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Chair, if you'll put together a letter and just let them know.
I will.
I'd be happy to take care of that. Item 12E, Utility Installation Permit Procedure/Policy. We talked about this several meetings ago, and this is in our ordinance. But one thing I'd like to see, and we've had issues with the, with specifically the water authorities, contractors. When they've installed water lines, we've had issues with cleanup, we've had issues with drainage, and basically where I'm looking to go here is, before the water authority pays their contractor, that somebody from the road department or the Board of Commissioners' office agrees that the, the landscape is put back in the state that it was when the construction began. That's where I'd like to see us go with this.
That's actually what, what the ordinance says. And bad on me for not following through. Personnel-wise, now we've got the personnel, we've got the expertise to do that, so it shouldn't be a problem in the future to get that done. Both, before we, supposed to go out and inspect, we're supposed to have five days in time to turn in for a permit. And that gives that five days gives the time for somebody to go out and inspect it, the condition it is before they start. So they got a reference to go back and inspect it when they get finished, to be sure it's at least at the standards it was to start with or better.
What, where I think we need to go with this is, is we need to revise this ordinance, as bad as, I hate to say that, in paragraph E. We need to just specify who's, because it says county planning director, which we don't have, or designated representative of the board. I think you've designated this to the road department supervisor.
Yeah, I give it to the supervisor.
I think we should specify in there who it is, that way we got clear. So let's just take this ordinance, and we'll look at it at the next meeting, and we'll start making revisions, and we'll start with this one, and that way we got some clearer language in it. Everybody's okay with that?
I agree.
Okay. Appreciate you getting that together for us, Chair. Moving into new business, since we won't take any action there. Item 13A, Zion CME Church Road, we've got some site distance issues. It goes back to vehicle speed, too. I met with a lady in District One on Zion CME Church Road. That's actually her driveway, looking back toward 29. The issue's not necessarily her driveway, but there is a driveway there at the church, Zion CME Church right there, I think's the name of it. If you look, there's a driveway right there, and there's a curve, and you've got that grove of trees that really restricts visibility, and we have very limited right-of-way here. And because this was an issue in District One, I felt like it was best that we, as a board, discuss it. And I'd like to see us see if we can get right-of-way from that property owner and get those trees taken down. And there's a couple of other areas there, so that there's not a safety issue and a visibility issue there, because cars fly up and down that road. It's a very narrow road, you can see it doesn't have any shoulders.
What's the speed limit on that road view? Are there one?
35 or 45, I can't remember.
It's 45, Rick. 45. Thank you. Thank you. You know how much site distance you need at 45 mile per hour?
Well...
You've got a list.
If I remember right, it's about 350 yards from her driveway there to that, those trees on the corner.
Yeah, her driveway is not the issue for the site distance.
It's the little, it's the trees up there in the corner where the problem is.
Yeah. I see.
That's probably 1,000 feet.
1,000 feet. To, to back to where that...
About 1,000 yards right there.
Yeah, about 1,000 feet, about 350 yards. I measured it out on the map.
So that's how much site distance you need?
No, 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 that's how much site distance is there. I'd have to go back to the regulations, see how much the DOT says you need.
The issue is up at the church. That's where the issue's at.
See the road right there? Well, they're coming out the church, though. Well, who owned the land? Could you ask them to cut the tree down and get permission to cut the tree?
Well, that's why we need to get right-of-way there. I need to see if we can get right-of-way, and that way we take care of the whole issue.
Yeah, we, we can, we can get a permanent right-of-way or get a, we can get a temporary right-of-way, that's up to y'all.
I'd rather try to get a permanent one, and next time you do some resurfacing on that road, just straighten that thing out and be done with it.
And plus, it's going to be an ongoing procedure, too. I mean, it makes sense, the way you can get a permanent right-of-way if it's possible.
But I, I felt like we, as a board, need to talk about this one, because I didn't feel like it would, I mean, requiring right-of-way, that's going to take county resources, and that's why I wanted to, to bring this before the board tonight.
What is the right-of-way, Carol?
Ditch to ditch.
Ditch to ditch.
It's prescribed. On that particular road, it's 60-foot.
There's no written right-of-way on it, just ditch to ditch.
And that's why it's no water than it is. So I make a motion that we have the county administrator reach out to the property owner along with the county attorney, and see if we can get right-of-way through there. Obviously, we're looking to, to do that for safety reasons, and I have not discussed it with the property owner, but I think maybe they'll be willing to, to work with us there so we can get some of that cleaned up, and hopefully we won't have any accidents there.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, a second by Commissioner Sayer. Any more discussion on the Zion CME Church site distance issue? If not, yes, if you'll come to the podium, please. If you'll come to the podium.
I'm James Fordham, I live in District One. I've been up and down that road many a times. Now, there's no speed limit sign on this end, coming from Bowman Highway out towards the 29 Highway, but there's one on the other end, coming back towards Bowman Highway. Now, I think you need to put a sign up on this other end over here, to let people know what the speed limit sign is.
The, the reason there's probably not a speed limit sign there is it's probably not all the way through. The DOT sets the speed limits, we have nothing to do with that.
Is that right? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Explain it.
And there's sections of a lot of roads where we've got, you've got a speed limit that's in our speed limit ordinance, and then there's sections where you can't even, they can't run radar, because there's no speed limit there. So, okay. But let's, if you don't mind, just at least look at it, just to see. I have a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, a second by Commissioner Sayer, to try to acquire additional right-of-way in this area of Zion CME Church Road. Any more discussion, public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is property tax refund. This is a Mize, where there was an issue with the property that was purchased, and everything is in order. Mr. Gordon, we got you, just look at this as well.
I have, and the appropriate actions have been taken by the tax management, and to recommend that the modest refund deal be taken.
Can I get a motion that we refund, issue a refund of $385.84 to the Mize family for the error on a piece of property? I have a motion by Commissioner Carter, he's still good with that, with what I said, that amount. Just a second, a second by Commissioner Teasley.
Mr. Chairman, one bit, now, 315.
Yeah, I think what the penalty and interest is 384, uh, 385 is what I'm seeing here.
Well, I know that's what it was, but if you read on down there...
Oh, yeah, yeah. I see that.
The landowner believed that, he, he didn't own the property, just not, that the track hadn't been set out, the separate tax track. But he was figuring that based on the building he got, he should have been billed $70, and that's why he's asking for 315 back.
Okay.
I don't see that. I mean, this is...
It's in the, in the amulet of the bar.
Oh, okay, I got you. Okay.
I'm still struggling with the whole bill, it's...
Yeah, if you look on the back page, the back of that page, that last...
Oh, the sole conservations, we're part of this as that.
Part of, it's basically saying that we request a refund of 315.84.
So I amend that motion to 315.84, I see what the issue is now. I apologize for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
You good with that, Commissioner Teasley? Any more discussion, public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. We have a second one, Ayers family. The issue here was property was, was being taxed, and it actually belonged to the neighbor. The request here is a refund of $117. This is involving a dock accessory.
That'd be two, two, one, 17. One for one for the tax year of 18, and one 17 for the tax year of 19, for a total of 234.
234 is the total.
I said, we don't have that. We only have one.
Do you have both of them in there?
There's two. I only have one in mine.
I got two.
Okay, here it is.
I got two.
Should be two.
Okay.
Yeah. You were 18 and 19.
So for 2018...
Make a motion, we approve the, both of them as a refund.
For 18 and 19, it's 217, $234, 117 per year.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion, public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. That wraps up the business part of tonight's meeting. We move into public comments. If somebody, if you'd like to come and address the board, if you'll come forward, public comment, anybody for public comment? Not, can I get a motion that we go into executive session for litigation in real estate?
So may I.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, and a second by Commissioner Sayer. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. All right.[214.87]
I get a motion that we exit executive session back in a regular meeting.
Make a motion.
A motion by Commissioner Sayer, second by Commissioner Carter. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Again, a motion that we adjourn the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Mr. Carter. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Let's take a ten-minute break and then we'll start on this budget study. Yeah, thanks for it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call to order the call meeting for budget, budget work session. I think it was advertised. Just a call meeting to discuss budget, so it's not a work session, it's actually advertised as a regular meeting, so I'll call it to order. Items on the agenda is to discuss FY21 budget, general fund budget overview, animal shelter request, recreation request, and library request, and then other time discuss issues as time allows. Could get a motion to approve the agenda for this, this meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Sayer, second by Commissioner Teasley. All in favor, raise your right hand. You, yeah?
Yeah, I'm talking.
Motion carried unanimously. So, Cheryl, I know you put a lot of time in this, we've had some discussions. At present time, we have a balanced budget of 13 million, well over 13, and change. A lot of time spent in this. Keep in mind, any changes that are made, there's two choices. If you give something, somebody loses something, or you take money out of fund balance, or you raise taxes, that's your choices. So, if you want.
Basically, I mean, you kind of hit on everything, and I want to applaud all the departments and the elected officials. I cut very little off their requests, most of them requested the same amount they had last year. Something just gonna go up, there's nothing you can do about them. But overall, I done very little cutting to say that, that, no, you asking for something you can't have, because the money just wasn't there on the revenue side to do it without making adjustments in taxes some way or another, which is completely in y'all's field, my Having said that, the animal shelter, their request was an increase, you'll notice it in there where they request, all the requests are listed to their, in their column where their request was, and if I'm not mistaken, 33% is their increase, around 33% increase in the funding for the animal shelter. The recreation department had requested a couple of personnel, I think, that's beyond my pay grade, to add personnel, so that's why they're here tonight, and they may have some other things they're gonna discuss with you, I'm not sure. Library, his request was again for 90,000, and I held it, I held it as the same funding it was last year in the, in the numbers, so that's a $13,000 increase that he was requesting, so I'll, I'll turn the floor over to these folks and let them make their case to you, and we'll go from there.
So, request for the animal shelter, what was submitted was $130,785. Actual budget for 2020 was 108,748. That seems high.
That's not all the animal shelter, that must be.
That's animal control, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But it's, both of them are in there, though.
Yeah, here, here, there's one, that's just for that, just the bottom line, and that too.
I need to send.
39,100. Yeah, it's mislabeled there.
Okay, not sure.
All righty, I feel like this mask is keeping me from being heard, but obviously, we are asking for a large increase, and normally, we would not do that. We've not asked for an increase in the 11 years since we set our operating budget at There have been ups and downs because of the formula we use, based on percent usage of the shelter, to the different jurisdictions, so there's been a few changes up and down, and it took us a few years to get to that 160, but we've been there for some time now, and obviously, costs go up a lot. We added a cap building, which was desperately needed, and we, all the original building, the cap building, all the capital expenditures like that are done with private donations and raised funds that we have raised. Those kind of costs are not passed on to the jurisdictions. What we ask the jurisdictions to do, as we always have, is just to cover our operating expenses on an annual basis, and, and 2009, 160,000 covered that, but the last four years, we've been averaging over 220, and we actually, costs are higher than that, but we absorb those, and we have covered the difference, about $60,000 the last couple of years, each, with our fundraising and grants and donations and so forth, because we, we're trying to be good citizens and cover as much as we can. If we didn't have to ask for an increase, we didn't want to, we're citizens here too, and we want to keep the, the costs as low for everybody as we can, but we also need to provide a, a good quality service, and the Department of Agriculture has recently changed some rules about the way dogs are housed, so that we're going to need to have a separate area, so we can separate dogs that have been there for a while, and we know are healthy and are ready to adopt, from those that are just coming in from animal control or strays people bring in that may break with parvo. As you know, that can shut us down for two weeks, and that's not something we enjoy, and certainly, we don't like to be close to the public. Also, it's better for the health of the dogs, which is a big consideration, too. So, we're going to need to add on an extension to the building, to have a separate housing facilities for the dogs that have already been there for a while, we know they're healthy and been vaccinated or whatever, and then, if we do happen to break with parvo, we should be able to just close down that area where that dog was, which would be the intake area, and then still have the other area open for adoptions and intake of, very carefully intake others, not have to close down the whole shelter. This, this is coming in, I think it was supposed to take effect this year, but they put it off, I guess, with the, everything, we were planning to break ground on the building this year, we hoped, and have it operational by next year. I say building, it's a wing, actually, but it has been put off with all the COVID stuff, too. But, long and short to say, that we have the funds to build it, with some bequests we've had, some donations, we've been saving towards this, because we knew this kind of thing was coming, but we can't do that and continue to subsidize the gap between the actual cost of running the shelter and what we've been asking the jurisdictions to pay for the last 10, 11 years. Hart County, obviously, is the last one we've come to this, this year, because of your fiscal year starting October 1st. So far, the, I'm not sure if we've heard from Hartwell yet or not, are they October 1st also? I think they might be, Hartwell City, are they also October 1st?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
July 1.
July, I thought they were July 1, okay. But so far, I, I didn't look up Hartwell, I'm sorry, but.
I'm sorry, January 1, I think, January 1.
Okay, okay, I know what happened with Hartwell, they, they got the letter late. We sent the letter out before others, but Hartwell had already committed to, to pay in the previous amount, but they're on board, I guess, for next year, which will be just a few months after you. But Franklin County and all the other cities, and Franklin County and Hart County, I guess that's Bauer, Desville, and then, we'll wait to see about Hartwell for next January, but they've all agreed to the increase, and have already given it in most cases, started, you know, given us a higher amount, because those on January, of course, started there, and we're coming to you, because obviously, the two counties are the two biggest supporters money-wise, and, and that's because, that's where we get most of our animals. We, we charge based on percent usage over a four-year average, so that there's not a huge bump in anyone's cost each year, and Franklin County generally is a little higher than Hart County, and it is this year, too, but that, that's why you're seeing such a big bump this year, because we did go up from the 160 to the 220 as our base amount, and that will cover our operational costs, we'll still be subsidizing some. It's been, I think it was 230 something last year, but we're okay with that, we can do that, but with this new wing needed to be added, and then there'll be utilities and so forth with that, too, that we're, we're willing to continue subsidizing, but we can't do that and this new thing that we're being required to do because of the, it, it needs to be done anyway, but the Department of Ag is going to be requiring it, so it's got to be done.
I'd like to see a budget for the animal shelter.
Okay.
I'm gonna say this, I'm not trying to be ugly, but we get no communication when the shelter shut down, we find out about it from our constituents. As a major, as a second largest funder and contributor, the taxpayer of Hart County, I'll be able to get this information instead of from other parties, so we just don't get it.
I, I understand that, now, you do get a quarterly report.
We get a quarterly report, but when the shelters close because of COVID or other things.
Well, now, I did notify Mr. Cartain and ask him to specifically tell you.
We, we.
Okay, well, the day that we, the day we found out, we had to close.
And to find out about this larger quest, kind of getting sprung on us, and I saw in your letter, there was supposedly a letter sent back in February.
Right. I have a copy of that.
Don't recall seeing that, and I'm not saying that I didn't, but I don't recall it. This is a huge request, because when you expand your facilities, your operating costs are gonna go up significantly, too.
Right, we realize that.
And this is something that's fixing to start spiraling out of control. And, you know, we got other people out here, I'm just speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the board, but I want to see where some of these expenses are. I want to understand more about why, you know, it's, it puts us in a difficult position, because, you know, here we are, looking at this increase, that, you know, where's the money gonna come from? You gonna take money out of a fund balance where you know you gotta build a jail? You gonna take a sheriff's deputy away from the sheriff's department?
Mm-hmm.
You gonna take an EMT away from 911? No, we're not. And so it leaves us a very few choices. But I'm very disappointed in the communication coming from the animal shelter, and, you know, we had the shelter director here, and, you know, because we wanted, and this is before COVID, our plans were to have these departments come in and give us presentations, and we started with the letter A, and we were moving forward to COVID, but, you know, when things settle down, we definitely want to go back to that, but this, this is just, just from a capital standpoint, the maintenance and operations part, I haven't seen a budget for that, I want to understand this before I make any kind of commitments, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand.
I understand, and we can get that together for you, that, that won't be a problem, and I apologize about the communications, we, I probably should just email you directly.
Email all of us.
Because I know you've got a lot going on.
I mean, email all of us, feel free to, call us, I mean, that's what we're here for, but it makes us look bad when we have people calling us, and, you know, I carried, I went to the animal shelter and the gates locked. What's going on? I don't know, I mean, I, you know, nothing's told us.
She tries to get it in the radio and in the papers and so forth, too, but of course, papers being weekly is hard.
You guys know what you're gonna do ahead of time.
Except for things like the COVID shutdown, they called us by surprise.
But the shelter board was involved in that, that could have been communicated. The library board didn't communicate with us either, we'd find out about that after the fact, you know, there was a vote taken. As long as we know and the communication lines are there, it's, it's a little bit different. When you got people calling and asking why or what's going on, if we don't know, we don't know. I called, and one of the ladies there said that the shelter was open. Well, the shelter being open and operating, and people being able to go there, two different things. They were caring for the animals, which she said that they were open, but I told the person that called me that they were open, she went up there and the gates locked. Well, it was closed to the public, but it was still open, because you had animals to take care of and that kind of thing, that's where the communication.
Just to clarify that, you're talking about during the COVID shutdown?
I am.
We were open to the public, but they were supposed to call, and there was a sign there to call and make arrangements to come in, you know, they were stopped at the gate, so they just couldn't drop in and come in.
I understand, but had the communication been there, we could resolve some of this.
I understand, you, that's a very valid point, I appreciate that.
How many employees you have up there?
It varies from time to time, we have, of course, a director, and then a couple of full-time employees, and then a good many part-time employees. It's, it's hard to keep track, because they work staggered schedules and, and so forth, but if I had, if everyone else could come with me tonight, everybody was sick or something, but the financial person could tell you exactly, because she writes the, the checks, but.
What kind of fund balance are reserved?
What kind of fund balance or reserves do you guys have?
The, really, the only reserves that we have is the fundraising and the donations that we have set aside, that's our backup.
Y'all have a significant-
We don't have any from the allocations from the jurisdictions, we use, I mean, that-
I mean, you had some private donations, some large private donations that had to be used for capital stuff, is that right, at one time?
We have, yes.
Is that money still available?
Some of it is, and that's part of what we're going to use for this addition.
How much is available?
Again, I'd have to get my financial person to tell you that, I don't know off the top of my head. We're hoping, from what I understand, that this, we think it's going to be enough to build and equip wing for the dogs.
I'd like to see the latest audit and, and the current budget for the upcoming year and last year.
Okay.
That we all need that form, I could see it.
Yeah, if we're gonna ask that, well, we'd make a mandate over every year, if you put that in there, and that way, we'll have, we'll have your budget required.
There's none of any here, no budget.
Yeah, the letters are in there.
Just the letters, that's all.
Yeah. There's no financial report in there.
The library audit's in here. I said, the library audit is in here.
I'll arrange to get the, talk to our budget then with the expenditure and so forth for last year and this year to date, is that what you're looking for?
I'd say the last two years. That way, you got the history of before, and then we're looking at going. Understanding the differences between the two years, and then being able to look at the, the audit and understanding the financial position.
So, 2018 and 19, since those are completed, or?
No, just the latest audits that you got, in the last two years, the last full fiscal year and then the current year budget.
Okay. I can arrange to get that for you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else on this?
Questions?
Y'all agree, we need that for you.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I can certainly understand that. But, if you have any other questions, please don't hesitate to reach out, and I will be sure that we do better about keeping in touch, besides the quarterly reports and so forth.
Quarterly reports are great, we get them on time every quarter, but when there's changes in operations, please let us know.
Yeah, if I fall, yeah, probably they'll call.
But, I mean, call me, you got my contact information.
I'll get it.
Okay, you can call me, I'll make sure everybody knows.
Okay.
Or send us an email, and we'll be happy to. I'll send you an email with everybody's email addresses, that way you'll have it, just let us know.
That'll work great, then. Because right now, we actually are closed to the public because of COVID. A visitor came through on the 17th, and later that same day tested positive, so they just closed us down. And they're allowed to take care of the animals, but they're not allowed to be open. They're still working with-
So, has that been communicated to the community?
She called all the animal control people, and-
What about newspaper, you know about that? The animal shelter's closed again because of COVID?
I didn't write it.
No, I was just saying, I'm just letting, no, she's, what she just said, I mean, that's, we need to get that word out.
We're talking about, back when it, back when it closed, really?
No, just, it's closed now.
Yeah, we just found out last week that we had to close, and-
We just found out, now it's closed.
I've heard them talk about it on the radio.
Yeah, it's been on the radio, and that is, that's one thing I did email about, but, like I said, I know you have a lot going on, especially this time of year, so I-
Yeah, I was gonna say, okay, I thought we were discussing the budget again, and I was okay.
But, I'll be sure to send it directly to you, too.
Okay.
Let me get that.
We appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, recreation. Thank you, thank you. Kay, how you doing?
Unless you wanted to. Why don't you get a copy, too? All right, I'm gonna start off, my name is Kay Ankerich, for those of you that don't know me, I'm here speaking on behalf of the Rec advisory board, and we're basically here tonight requesting that you, as a board members, or the board commissioners, allocate some additional funds to the rec department, and in the need of replacement moor, and for an additional maintenance personnel. And the reason behind that is, the rec has three moors right now, and I'm gonna look at my notes, so I tell this right, and I don't misstudiate this, but they have one bagger moor and one real moor that is used solely on the baseball fields. And that recommendation came from Charles Rice to purchase those two moors, and that's what we did, or that's what you all agreed to and actually purchased. Then they have the additional three moors, one in which the female inmates use, and that's a, what we call a replacement moor, a multipurpose moor, I guess you could say, to be used on any field. And that moor in itself has 1,000 hours, from what I'm being told. And then we have two additional, what we call replacement moors, with over 2,000 hours. Now, I give each of y'all a handout showing the site locations that this department is in charge of keeping up maintenance-wise, as far as cutting the grass and so forth. That amount of hours on the equipment, you can tell, they're gonna need additional moor to keep these facilities up. And I feel like that the hours that they have on the current moors, the cost involved in keeping them up maintenance-wise, I just feel like it'd be feasible to buy an additional moor rather than keep pouring money into something with that many hours on it, because of wear and tear. And I'm speaking from experience from working there at the rec myself years ago, you know, and the moors can only do so much, it's kind of like a car, eventually you have to replace it. So, we're asking that you please strongly consider allotment for them to purchase another moor for these upkeeps of these facilities. Now, as far as the additional personnel member, the reason behind that is, I'm just gonna give an example, like, let's say Big Oats, if he takes one of his guys down there to work, now, we all know that most of us have cellphones, but the county doesn't provide that service for that employee, does for your head person, but not the employees under him. So, let's say he doesn't have his phone with him, or he didn't even have a phone. And he comes into a safety issue where he maybe got too hot out there and has a heat strike. If he didn't have an additional person down there with him, who's, you know, who's he gonna be able to call, if he's even able to call? And I guess the biggest thing I'm trying to get at is, we need to have at least the manpower to put two people at each of the sites that they're working at on the days that they're working there. So, it becomes a safety issue, and also productivity, they can do the sites and knock them out, you know, rather than having one person here all day and one person over here all day, they can team up and knock more out. Productivity-wise and safety, I think, are the two biggest concerns for the increase, and then in that personnel. And not only that, Jim could use that person wherever he sees fit on other areas within the department. So, we're just asking for those two items at hand to be considered and strongly considered, if you would please.
How many hours on the real moor?
On the real moor?
Mm-hmm.
Jim, I can't speak for that.
Uh, I looked at it just, just the other day, several hundred hours.
But, keep in mind, the real moor and the bagger moor is only for the ball fields.
What'd you say?
And for, and the bagging moor is for the corn.
Well, we got some plans for some of the grass cutting stuff.
Anybody else have something?
Something, I'll, just to, you use the equipment, not ball out of there, well.
No, it's bought out of sploths.
Equipment, that's sploths. It's a total different budget, ain't even a show nothing.
Okay.
The other thing I'd like to point out is the increased acres that we're covering now. We've gone from 80 acres in 2012, 2016, we've got 196 acres. It's quite an increase. That's where the additional personnel would come in.
Well, there's some things that I can't really discuss right now, but we do, we've talked about some things with some of the grass cutting.
I'm sorry, can you speak up, Mr. Dorsey?
I said, we've talked about some things offline, not publicly, about the grass cutting, and I think Terrell's got a plan he's gonna do to address some of that. When I look at the facilities, how long does it take to cut all this grass that's being cut? How many hours a week does it take?
We pretty much cut grass all day long, whether it's weed eating, whether it's cutting grass, spraying for weeds, but yeah, it's, it's a constant thing. If we've got less rain, we don't have to cut as much. We've got plenty of rain lately, we have to cut more. We just cut this facility here today, and you can see, we cut it a couple weeks ago, and it's already-
You only cut it slightly, right?
Yeah, and it's, it's bailing.
The, the grass at Gum Branch, did you cut that table, does the city-
Yes, sir. No, the city has, the city has nothing to do with Gum Branch, other than if we have a water issue, they come out and take care of it, if there's an electrical issue, they come out and take care of it.
That's not quite an active statement.
Okay.
The city does put in financially on the go.
Okay, yes, he is correct about that. We take care of cleaning it, taking the trash, we go down there, win at the bask, or fishing tournament, and make sure everything's up speed.
So, that's very misleading, and not being critical, I'm just speaking the facts. Clay Street Park, it's 26 acres. How much of grass, how many acres of grass is there? Eight? 10?
No, it's quite a bit, quite a bit more. I'd say at least, I'd say at least 20 acres worth of grass.
No.
Well, you got your tennis courts that take, take away from that, you've got two pavilions.
You got your parking lot.
You got your parking lots, and one building-
You got all that creek area down there, and, ooh, it's just not grass.
I'd say 15 to 20 acres.
So.
I'll pull it back to that.
So, you got X mark moors, right?
We have one X mark, we have one John Deere, both of them have well over 2,000 hours. We have the Kubota, that since we don't have the girls, we're using that as well, it has over, almost 1,000 hours, and we haven't had that all that long.
Oh, okay.
Yes, totally separate.
But, my point here is, okay, I'm gonna just say, you got 18 acres, just throwing that out there. That X mark moor is ready to cut, how many acres an hour?
Oh, I don't know.
Two?
Um, I, I don't know.
Okay. I want to see this thing broken down, so how many acres, how long does it take? I want to fully be able to quantify this. And I know, I know there's other things there, that they do as far as picking up trash, emptying trash and all that, but we use grass cutting as a crutch and to hide a lot of things. There's other things that these folks do, besides the grass cutting. So, I want to, I want to break that out. Don't use grass cutting as a catch-all, because it's not. You need to truly understand what activities you have, how long it takes to get them done, so you can schedule and see, you know, you're gonna have, if a baseball had been going on, you would have guys working on marking off fields and things like that, that you probably now capture under grass cutting, looking at what I'm seeing here. And I'm just trying to, trying to get it out so we understand, and it's clear to see what people are truly doing, how long it takes, just, just so you can put all that stuff together.
We take away, when we're doing field marking, when we're dragging fields, we're taking away from cutting grass. Now, anything that we cut, we gladly do that.
I understand, but looking at what you've put together here, we're talking about all the acres we're maintaining. You're doing a lot more than just maintaining, that's my point. You need to truly understand the activities that you have to do, and how long it takes to do each one. So, you can kind of look at it streamlined, and just from an efficiency standpoint, some of the grass cutting we're looking at, there's some other things going on that I don't think we're in a position tonight to make a decision. I have no problem if we need to buy, I don't think the board has any problem if we need to buy moors, if that's what we need to do, that's what we're gonna do. We've got to give you the tools to do the job, but at the same time, we need to understand, once we get it, we want to make sure that we see the results. That's just, just my thinking, I mean, we don't have the inmate crew now that does a lot of the grass cutting, and Terrell's got a plan that he's working on with that, and, you know, when that's ready for prime time discussion, it should be here probably next meeting. These issues should be, most of these should be taken care of, and some of the grass cutting stuff will be off of y'all. But, we do appreciate what you do.
Definitely appreciate it.
We, we're gonna do whatever we can for the county. Save money, that's what we'll do. Terrell knows, because, you know, we talk every morning, what can I do today to help the county? As far as the personnel goes, I know how that is, and what we're in as far as budget goes, but like Ms. Kay was saying, we send, we have three guys, three maintenance recreation associates, we send two over here, then we got one going somewhere else. It'd kind of be safer for that one if there were two. I think our productivity would increase considerably, because we're able to take more equipment with us. But, yeah, one's cutting, one's weed eating, one's spraying weeds, one's trimming shrubs, one's blowing the clippings off. I think we could get more done, obviously, with another hand, if, if that is in, possibly in the plan.
Well, anytime you're using equipment, it's not nice to have, not good to have one person around. I've been around that equipment a long time, I know what hap, what can happen to you. Now, also, if you're gonna time yourself on cutting the grass, you can time yourself on a wide open field, or you can time yourself trimming around trees, it could be different.
You gotta take a weighted average of the whole thing.
Yeah, it's not gonna work out the same both ways. When I bush all, I can bush all two acres an hour, if the grass ain't real tall.
But, well, you can consider raising some more, hopefully, go out, 15 more people back out.
And they did a great job, too.
Uh, again, so you gotta kind of keep that in mind.
Hopefully, they'll come back out.
But, you just don't know when.
Some more will get back somewhere to where they wanted.
These ladies did do 29 different locations that I have on a map in my shop, and we go, when they, when they go out, okay, where'd you cut yesterday? Well, we cut right here, we've got it broken down into north, west, and south, and then in town. We have increased their productivity, because before, we would look at it and they would go somewhere up north, and they'd come somewhere down south. And then to go back up to the, sorry, to the west, and it just wasn't efficient, so we changed that. And then y'all bought the equipment they had, we keep that with their trailer, and whenever they're able to come back out, that'll be great.
So, the request tonight, too, is also for moor.
That'd be covered in the floor.
So, to get a motion, we just, going to allow them to put that up, put it out for bid?
I'll make a motion.
When they come out of sploths, have a motion second, that we go ahead and move forward with that. All in favor, raise your right hand. So, there's your direction, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
But, we're just not really in a position with some of the things going on.
How wide, how wide a moor would be?
60.
60.
60? We can't really go any bigger than 60, you could go 70, too, but it, you start running into places where you can't get.
That gets you started.
We appreciate that.
Hopefully, we can get some of this other stuff taken care of. Now, one thing I got to make- Anything else? We, we will have to come back and revisit this. Um, because, like I said, there's some things going on, so.
Thank you very much.
If we had some communication about future plans, that would also be helpful.
We're not ready to discuss yet. As soon as we can discuss it, we will.
As soon as they tell me, I'll tell y'all.
If they-
Tell me, I'll tell y'all.
But there are some things in the works that should make some things better.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're right, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Lab, Rick Richard?
Okay. I'd love to say I can see anything at all that y'all are doing. My, my eyes aren't as good anymore. Um, as I sent, uh, the request to Terrill, I had asked for a 90, up to 90,000. That's kind of more like showing the flag, because that was the original, thank you very much. That's awesome. Uh, that was the original, um, uh, Maintenance of Bedford agreement from years ago that's been, uh, I won't say altered, but, uh, we've been taking, uh, we're, y'all have been giving us the 77,000 for several, several years, and we can, we can make do with that this year. But I did want to put in the request just that, uh, we could use it if we got it. But I understand, I talked to, uh, Commissioner Sayre, and he was saying that the money's just not going to be available. I understand that. And we, we're going to probably be doing some, uh, cost cutting around the library anyway. So is there anything I need to tell y'all? Or I'd be glad to answer questions.
Are you, are you, uh, having to close because of COVID or anything like that?
Yes, sir. We're operating on a limited schedule right now of, uh, just 10 to 2 on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Uh, my staff is reduced right now, and we're trying to protect everybody as much as we can. We've got Plexiglas shields around the circulation desk. Uh, we require masks to come into the library. We've limited access to the computers and, let's see, what was the other thing? Oh, and limiting the number of people coming in the library at any, at any ti, any given time. We have a greeter at the front door, and, uh, they, uh, ask people to put on their masks and, uh, keep a record of who's in the building.
What you going to do if somebody says they're not going to put on a mask?
I'm perfectly willing to call the police if they're willing, if, if they're going to be belligerent about it, but we can't, we are allowed to require that.
Not if we've got a medical condition. I'm just trying to keep, because I don't want us in illegal issues when I'm saying that.
No, I understand, but, uh, there's not really a, uh-
You headed down the wrong path in what you were saying.
I'm sorry?
You were kind of headed down the wrong path. You can't ask them what they have, what your medical condition is.
No, no, I wasn't going to ask that, but they'd need to show some sort of documentation about it. No? They're not, they're not allowed, they don't have to-
Violation of federal law.
Okay. I had not understood that about the, the COVID virus. I understood you can't ask about a service animal that way. I thought they had to produce some sort of document saying that they, that, that was, uh, requiring a mask. Well, okay. That's interesting. I'll have to talk to somebody about that and get the, get the documentation for that. Okay, well, thank you for that. I will. Anyway, so the 77,000, as I said, we can, we can get by with that. Uh, I'm not, uh, I'm fine with it for this, for this year, certainly. As I said, uh, Commissioner Sayre said that the money isn't there. I'm not going to, uh, beg for money that's not there.
Well, just to clarify, they, they're, we've got constitutional offer mandate from the state this year as an expense. We have a-
Huge expense.
And then-
I'm sorry?
Also, we've done the Homestead exemption for this, uh, you know, if it passes, we, you know, we got to consider that. That was the two major things I, I think I, I just wanted the board to be aware of what I had spoken to you about.
The constitutional officer's increase was how much? 80,000? We were mandated constitutional officer pay raises.
I'm sorry?
State mandated constitutional officers' pay raises.
Oh.
Yeah, that we were not, that we were not planning for.
Okay. I, I, I'm, I'm agreeing. I, I understand you have, I'm understanding y'all have, had big increases, and that's why I wasn't trying to, I wasn't going to push for, for any increase from us for this year.
And looking at your audit, um, based on what's going on with COVID, the reduced hours and things like that, um, there should be a surplus in the library this year. Would you agree?
That'd be something. Uh, I believe you asked me about our utility saving. I think we saved about $7,000 from that. Uh, in the document I sent to, uh, Terrill, I thought we would be able to avoid using, uh, local money at all for utilities because also the, uh, uh, the new lighting system that we got, I believe, is using less electricity. And so that's a, that's a saving as well.
Have you, you have you realized a huge saving in your utilities?
I won't say huge. Uh, it's been, it's been something, though. It's been measurable.
Well, be comfortable, 77. I think that's where we're probably going to end up at.
Okay. Well, uh, with the, with the savings that we're, we're looking at, I think we can get by. I do still, I do still think we need another, uh, professional on staff. I've got, the people that I've got are, are dedicated and, and conscientious, but they're not as, they're not trained as professional librarians, and I think we could use, we could use that, uh, to get better service. But right now, we can, we can slide by for right now. Anything else I can tell you?
We would like to know when things, any changes in operational stuff, we would like to know about. Same situation we talked about before.
Yes, sir.
So what's, let me-
I keep hoping that we can go back to increasing our hours, but then the number of cases of COVID keep going up in the county, too.
Hypothetically speaking, you have an employee that tests positive and has COVID, what are you going to do?
Uh, well, we'll probably have to close down because if, depending on who they worked with, I guess everybody will have to be tested, because we have a very small staff. Yes, sir. You said to make sure that you were involved if I had to, uh, if I had any staff that were, were testing positive.
But just from a reaction point of what we're doing, make sure it goes along.
Absolutely.
As far as the mask thing, that's pretty serious.
I'll find out about that. Okay.
Must buy a lot of your stores and back to White Brummette, who they were running at at the store.
Well, the governor said you couldn't mandate it.
We can't mandate-
There's a, there's a rule with the, what I've heard from this, this is one reason I'm, I'm confused. There was a rule from the state library that said, because we're part of the university system, or we're under the Board of Regents of the university system, that they're allowed to require masks, and they're, and by extension, public libraries are as well. But- Okay. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you what I've got, and, and we can, we can compare it, and I'll, and I'll brief the staff.
We appreciate it. Any other questions?
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Anything else? I think you did a good job with it, Terrill.
Yeah, I think you did.
You're the one that put it all together.
Too long, because they make my world easy.
They, they do a good job. We've got good department heads and constitutional officers. We appreciate them. We don't play games. I told you, it's what you got to have and keep it as low as you can, and they do their best to do that. All right, nothing else. Now you're in motion adjourned.
Same way.
In a second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Sayre. Adjourned. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.